I'd like to call the City of Frazier zoning board of appeals meeting of July 17th, 2025, to order at 7:01 PM. If you would all please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, should we have a roll call, please?
Burley.
Present.
Cemente.
Present.
Farina.
Present.
Green.
Present.
Menendez.
Present.
Stasic.
Present.
Wall.
Present.
That is a quorum.
Okay, approval for July 17th today, there's going to be one amendment there. We left off a public hearing after old business, 7B will be public hearing.
No, 7A is a public hearing, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that's all.
Yeah, 7A is public hearing with an action item following.
Yeah, there's just a title and the agenda was wrong, that's all. We should acknowledge it's a public hearing.
You mean 8A?
Yeah, I'm confused.
8A?
Was it 8A?
Sorry.
Oh, yeah, it is 8A.
8A, correct.
It is 8A, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So that doesn't require an amendment, just be aware that's a public hearing, that's all.
Okay.
Accept the motion to approve. Anybody?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And agenda's approved. Okay. Formal statement by the Chair. Petitioners and members of the audience, the zoning board of minutes.
Minutes.
Minutes, number five.
Approval of the minutes for June 5th.
Cindy did these minutes, so I got nothing.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Okay.
They were excellent.
Yeah, I'm sure they were.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Formal noes, statement. Petitioners and members of the audience, the zoning board of appeals has herein created as a body of limited powers, where there are practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships in the way of carrying out the strict letter of the Frazier code, the board shall have the powers in passing upon appeals to vary or modify any of the provisions of the code relating to the construction, structural changes in equipment, or alterations of buildings or structures, so that the spirit of the code shall be observed, public safety secured, and substantial justice done. No variance in the provisions or requirements of the code shall be authorized by the board unless the board finds evidence that all of the following facts and conditions exist. A, that there are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applying to the property, questions as to the intended use of the property that do not apply generally to other properties in the same zoning district. That B, so that such a variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of substantial property rights similar to that possessed by other properties in the same district in the same vicinity, and the possibility of increased financial return shall not of itself be deemed sufficient to warrant a variance. C, that the authorization of such a variance shall not be of substantial detriment to the adjacent property and will not materially impair the intent and purpose of the Frazier code or the public interest. And D, that the condition or situation of the specific piece of property or the intended use of the property for which the variance is sought is not of so general or recurrent nature as to, excuse me, reasonably practical formulation of a general regulation for such a condition or situation. Having said that, we'll go on to items seven. Old business, there's none. Eight new businesses, the board, public hearing. And we're going to talk about ZBA 25-0231471 Grove Street fence variance. Lauren?
Thank you, Chair Farina. So this variance is at the corner of Grove and Hanover Street, across the street from McKinley Park. So the applicant is Laura Griffin Stewart, and she is looking for a variance to erect a six-foot privacy fence, it's vinyl, 18 inches inside the side street line along Hanover Street, and the ordinance, section 9-3C, requires that a non-site obscuring fence, no more than four feet in height, may be erected parallel to a side street of a corner lot, provided it's located at least one foot inside the side street lot line, and does not extend beyond the front building line into the front yard. So we will note that this fence has been constructed already, if you've visited the property, you see that. So this is essentially a request to keep the fence, otherwise, if this variance isn't granted, the fence will have to be removed. So in reviewing the ordinance against the four standards for determining hardship, the first one being exceptional or extraordinary circumstances, the applicant identifies the wide easement and proximity to public park being unique circumstances, and we do agree that the easement, and I'll flip over, there is a fairly wide right-of-way of this lot that is unique to, is unique, and other corner lots may not have the same width of that right-of-way. The second item is that the variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of a substantial property right that's possessed by properties in the same vicinity. The applicant states that the six-foot privacy fence is essential to preserve her right to enjoy her property with a level of privacy comparable to other lots in Frazier, and that the additional burden of overflow parking and foot traffic from the park also highlights the need for this fence and enjoying the property similar to neighbors. We find that granting the variance would allow the applicant a similar property right to those in the vicinity as well. The third item, that authorizing the variance will not be of substantial detriment and will not materially impair the intent and purpose or the public interest, so the applicant states that fence will comply with all safety regulations, that the fence will enhance the neighborhood harmony, and will also not impact visibility or traffic safety. And, you know, we agree that granting this variance will not negatively impact adjacent properties or the public interest or safety, and that clear vision will be maintained, which is the intent. So the intent of that fence ordinance is to ensure that vehicles and pedestrians can see the intersection, so it's not creating hazardous condition. And so that's why the ordinance is in place, but what the ordinance is, you know, is that four-foot, non-site obscuring, so we feel that that meets the intent of that. And then finally, that the conditions of the specific piece of property or intended use are not so general that it will create a general rule. So again, we find that it's a unique lot due to the larger easement. We understand that there's several corner lots in Frazier that would also have similar situations, but we'll note that, you know, we do want to change this in the upcoming zoning ordinance update. So I did provide, again, this is not final, but we did provide the draft language for the fence ordinance, and essentially, the provisions, again, in draft form, that relate to the corner lots would be just ensuring that the clear vision requirements are being met, and those clear vision requirements are, depending on if it's a street or a driveway, there's certain distances from there that creates a triangle for visibility. So given all of those findings, we believe that the ordinance standards for obtaining variance have been met, we recommend ZBA grant the request.
Does anybody have any questions for the?
That's 92 feet, opposed to 96, correct.
Correct, I apologize, yes. So the public hearing notice was 96, and that was an error on my part, the actual request is 92, but since it's a lesser variance being sought, the board is still able to take action on it. Thank you.
Any other questions? The applicant? Come up? Are you the applicant?
No. No, I am, yeah.
All right. Did you identify yourself?
I'd like to apologize for not doing it the right way. It's okay.
Do you have anything to add to what the planner had to say?
No, I met with Lauren to help me figure out how to do this, and she pretty much explained to me how the ordinance has worked and everything, so I understand what she explained.
Why didn't you do it the right way?
Um, there were some extenuating circumstances involved with some issues that I had with a neighbor.
Okay.
And I chose to not do it, and I regret that decision.
Okay. I'm sorry, one more time, repeat, how many times?
There were some extenuating circumstances that I had with a neighbor, and because of those circumstances, I chose to just do it anyway, and I regret that now, but it would have been much easier to just do it the right way upfront.
Does anybody else have any questions for the applicant? If you could, your name again is?
Laura Griffin Stewart.
And you live at?
31471 Grove.
Thank you.
And this is my moral support, my daughter. I'm very nervous.
That's okay.
All right, if you could take a seat.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm going to open up the public hearing. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to be heard, come forward. Identify yourself, name and where you live, please.
I'm 31493.
Hold on, sit down.
31493 Grove.
Okay.
I'm the neighbor that she's talking about.
Your name is?
Gary Wakefield.
I'm Kelly Wakefield.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Well, the day that she turned it down, I watched an argument between her and the city, and then after they were putting, after the city left, they were making fun of the city, which was not cool.
He was trying to stop this side from being put up, the city was, and put a stop to it, but once they left. Go ahead.
No, they continued just to do what they wanted to do. But I believe she's just going to use it to hide her weeds, because right now, you go back there, they're eight foot tall. So to block it off so nobody can, no, the city can't see it, then I got to look at it. I mean, she sits in her doorway and watches me through her fence that she put up to this, to stop this, okay, but she continues to just...
There's been a long, ongoing issue between us and the city for over a year. The fence finally went up, which I was like, okay, that's good, it'll bring us a little bit of peace, but the fact that the code didn't have to be followed, the code got broke, we watched the city guy out there trying to stop her from putting up at least the side of the road where it has to be four feet. We watched the fencing people just stand around, and as soon as the guy from the city left, the fence continued to go up. And I'm like, well, I guess we're going to see how many times the code can be broken. We have followed every code, we have gotten multiple complaints, everything we've done, we've followed code, we've pulled permits. Multiple things have been done on this property without pulling permits or codes, without having to fight for them first. So now that there's actually a hearing, we're excited to see that for once, we can actually voice our opinion to somebody higher up other than Chuck and Bob.
So I think she called the city on me, I'm, we're talking multiple times. I put a shut up, they called on the concrete, they called on anything, everything.
Bonfire.
Everything they could do, called the police on us for fire. She should not be allowed to get away with not following the code of Frazier. This is, this is wrong, because I have to follow it.
And I understand you want to make a provision to change it for future, and that's fine, but the code that stands right now is the code that she broke. Now, if you want to change it for the future for other people who are going to put up fences, I understand that, but you're asking residents currently to follow the current code that you now have advertised. That fence went up before you guys even discussed changing the provisions. So personally, as a resident in Frazier who has to follow the code, and we're always abiding by Chuck and Bob, I don't see why, because it erected after, she was told to stop, and it still went up after your guys left. So saying I apologize, I should have stopped, but you were told to stop, and you still erected it anyways after they left. That's why we came to speak our part too, because she is saying, I shouldn't have broke code, but I did it anyways because of us being the neighbors, but you were told to stop, and you still allowed these people to do it because you paid them to do their job. It's not my fault that you paid to have a fence put up without following the code first. We have to check codes, and then inside the property is a fence within a fence. So it's like, how many things can just be going on? We're trying to fix our problems all the time.
She just currently called me on a light post I put up, and I did, I had a swimming pool, I put a light post, up the post up, put a couple of lights on it, and then she called the city, and they said, the city said, you have to pull a permit. I pulled my permit. I did what I'm supposed to do. She needs to do what she's supposed to do and follow the code of Frazier.
Other than that, I mean, otherwise, you're saying it's okay to break a code because there's exceptions to all these rules. The exception was, you should have stopped until it got cleared by your board, but instead of waiting till it went to you guys before the final wall went up, all the other sides were up. It's not breaking code. It's this side that you're looking at a picture of, where the traffic from the park that they're referring to goes on the other side where there's a sidewalk, because it's wider, but this side was put on hold. And after the Frazier guy said to stop and left, this side remained, continued after. That was stopped, that wasn't up. That's why we're here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Member Cemente. Are you, excuse me, are you on Hanover? Do you live across?
On Grove.
On Grove?
Right on the other side.
You're on the other side?
It's behind the fence, we thought she was coming, but something came up. It's one of those backs up, and then we're on this side of the fence, she's on the main road, this side of the fence that you're looking at right now. And no, no, nothing was called through property line when the fence went up.
Yeah, he can't hear, yeah, yeah.
But we're next to her on Grove Street, so we're this side of her, and then she's the corner, and then behind her's a different neighbor that we deal with.
Oh, so you're on this side of her?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sure if you were to, I don't know what capabilities the board has, but if you looked back at all the multiple complaints Chuck and Bob have been dealing with, you can see the review as to why they're in the street there.
And the Frazier police.
And the Frazier police, multiple times, over silly things, but it all started with changing the grade, and then us arguing the grade, which is why the fence went up to hide what's going on in the yard, and that's fine.
And then I talked to Chuck, and then I said, we're going to flood. I had five inches of water in my yard after she changed the grade.
Laid down.
So it's like, I thought there was a code, at least you change a grade, I mean, and then you change grades, she changes grades, there's got to be a code somewhere.
But somewhere in Frazier, you don't have a code against using multiple trees that you cut down and used all the wood chips to level your yard out as a code.
For years, she had weeds on these hills for, I mean, they were six foot high.
And that's what Chuck came out, and then we referred to Bob, who Bob really didn't do anything either, so then we tried to reach out to the higher up, and we just got, it's nothing we can do.
But you look at her log pile, by her log pile, there's six-foot weeds out, there's seven-foot weeds.
So, I mean, for us, the fence is hiding it, but if you're going to break code, then everybody else is going to break the code.
Her yard is 60% weeds in her front. She don't trim, she don't trim nothing, it's just gross.
She's disabled.
Multiple people are disabled.
Ma'am, ma'am, ma'am.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
You're going to talk to them?
I apologize.
Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Any other questions?
No, we can go on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Anybody else want to be, public hearing, want to be heard? Identify yourself, please.
I'm the boyfriend of her daughter.
Do I have a name?
Oh, yeah, yeah, my name is Noah Walker, I'm the boyfriend of her daughter.
Address?
Well, I don't, I don't live in that city, so.
Address?
Okay, I live at 1300, or 13006 East 11 Mile Road, Warren, Michigan, 48089.
That's good.
Perfect, awesome. Yeah, no, I just know this has kind of been an ongoing issue. I've heard that, you know, her neighbors constantly call the police. I remember last year in the summer, we were just out having a bonfire, and the police have got called, I think it was like three times that night, they got called, for us having a bonfire, and everything was within code, the police came, and the measurements were, you know, she was, the fire pit was a certain distance away from the property and everything, and it just, it just seems like it's, this is like an ongoing issue. And to call three times in the same night about someone having a bonfire and just enjoying a summer night just seems a little, a little strange. So, I mean, it's just one thing I would like to share.
Thank you.
I have a question. For Lauren August, I'm not sure who, has this fence, has this fence been inspected and has it passed inspection?
So originally, the fence permit was issued without the red portion, so that was approved when they went out to look at it, so.
The what portion?
The red portion along the.
Okay. The green was all approved?
The green, I believe, was approved, and I'm not sure if they went out to look at the green, or if they were waiting for the ZBA to determine if it was, if the variance was going to be granted, or if they were going to have to rip it out to inspect it. So I don't believe that it's been final, that was, so the final inspection hasn't happened, but the initial post holes were.
Let me ask you this, if a motion was made to approve it, could it be with the contingency that that 92-foot section has to pass inspection?
It wouldn't necessarily be necessary for you to do that, because we would do that, but if it makes you more comfortable with the motion, then that would be acceptable.
I guess what I'm saying, if it, for some odd reason, it didn't pass, then?
Done.
Then where you at?
Way in.
So I think we have several issues. The first of which is, there are multiple variances buried in here, so if your motion to approve includes the height and the fact that it obscures sight, because those are both things that can't be, but if you wish to approve both of those because you find a practical difficulty or an unnecessary hardship, that is the burden that they have, then as far as passing inspection goes, the only other thing that the inspectors would look for before granting the permit would be to make sure that it's installed with the proper side facing out, facing in, make sure it's installed properly in the ground, and there wouldn't be much more to look at, it's brand new, pretty much, so it's not going to have paint peeling and, you know, deficiencies in property maintenance. So I think it's a, it's a fine thing to add, but it's a very minor, if it doesn't pass inspection, they have to fix it, or they're going to get cited, and they're going to have to take it out anyway, regardless of your variance.
So that's kind of it, no point in putting it in that.
Right, it's redundant, because they will come out and issue the final permit for them if that's, if that's the will of the board.
Member Cemente, please.
Wait, the.
Lauren, I got a question. Ma'am, we'll get to you. I got a question. When the contractor came for the permit, wasn't he informed on zoning ordinance?
Yeah, I will, I will say that there's validity to the fact that code enforcement and did speak to the contractor, and did tell him that the fence he was installing was not in accordance with the permit that was approved, so.
Anyhow.
That is correct, yep.
Well, this is a very costly lesson, you are, because she has to pay for this money, right?
Correct, correct, and so now, you know, to the applicant's credit, is doing the appropriate channel, and so I think the variance should be determined on if the board finds there is a hardship, and I think that is the pertinent thing to the case.
Yes, ma'am. Identify yourself.
Laura Griffin Stewart, at 31471 Grove. The day they inspected the, the part of the fence that was approved, they were finishing the fence along Hanover. So they, they were there, the inspector was there the day that they were finishing that fence.
Okay.
I don't know if that makes a difference, but he was there.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? I'll overturn the motion. Whoops, go ahead, sir. Go ahead.
Yeah, I've got a question. So in theory, if there was no red line there of fence, we wouldn't be here, right?
Correct.
Okay. And I guess, did you know that the fence was going all the way around?
I chose to go ahead and put the fence up, the six-foot fence, all the way around because of the issues that I was dealing with, with the constant complaints to code enforcement and the problems that I was having.
Was, but is that, is that person on the north side of you, right?
Yes.
So why do, by putting the fence on the south side, would that make a difference?
Because they walk around my house, not just that way, they walk around my house this way, in the front of my house, taking pictures, even currently, if I were to walk to my, if you were to walk to my house today, they have their garbage cans lined up on my fence line underneath my bedroom window.
Where's your bedroom window?
My bedroom window is, see where the green line comes out that, out my house? It's just beyond that green line between their house and my home.
Okay.
So they have decided, instead of having it out by their shed, they have now moved it to along the fence line underneath my bedroom window. They feel that that's a better place for their garbage cans, which they have about a dozen of them.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if they think that that's going to make me stop sitting in my backyard, playing with my dogs, or stink me out of my bedroom in the summer, make me not open my window.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know.
I have a question for you. In, in your statement, you had said that, you stated that due to the foot traffic from the park across the street and the pedestrians cut through your yard on a regular basis, so it's, it's more than just your neighbor issue, correct?
Yes, it is. Whenever, whenever there are functions at McKinley Park, overflow traffic, parks along Hanover, so if I'm in my backyard trying to do anything, I have to deal with all the parking down Hanover and constant people coming in and out of their cars, so I have no privacy in my backyard.
Okay.
I have constant people in my backyard. I had kids stealing stuff out of my backyard, destroying my property, I, we just, okay, it was silly, but for grins and giggles, we put a deer head to dry out in the trees, in the crux of the tree, the bugs would eat it, so, you know, it would, okay, I don't want to get graphic, I'm sorry.
Okay.
We put that in the crux of the tree, the kids stole it.
You answered my question, I just wanted to make sure that this wasn't just a neighbor issue and that.
No, no.
More to it.
The kids come through my backyard, they're destructive, it's constant people all the time parking on my lawn, it, I mean, it's not my lawn, it's the city's lawn over at that, at Hanover, but it's constant people there all the time.
Member. Member Cimente? Is that fence, is it replacing a cyclone fence you had there? Or did you have, is it wide, wide open, or did you have...
It was wide open.
So you didn't, never had any?
No, I never had any.
Oh. So it was wide open?
Yes.
So when the cars came, you were parking on the side there?
Yes.
Oh, and...
Yep. Or if my neighbors have a function, and they have friends parking there, all there. Never any privacy.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve variance request 25-0231471 Grove Street for Laura Griffin Stewart, to obtain a variance from Section 9-3C of the Code of Ordinances to install a six-foot in height, 92 feet in length, vinyl sight obscuring fence, 18 inches inside the side street light lot line on a residential corner lot, where only a four-foot in height, non-sight obscuring fence, at least one foot inside the side street lot is permitted. The following hardship, the right-of-way is a unique circumstances that may not apply to other corner lots, that such variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of a substantial property right like that possessed by other properties in the vicinity. Granting this variance will afford the applicant a level of privacy and security due to proximity, proximity to a public park and larger easement. And lastly, we do not believe that granting this variance will negatively impact any adjacent properties or negatively impact the public interest of public safety. We find that there is clear vision area will be maintained and will not impair vehicular or pedestrian traffic.
So the second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? Mr. Secretary, Mr. Clerk?
You ready?
Yep.
Okay. Burley?
Yes.
Cimente?
Yes.
Farina?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Menendez?
Yes.
Stasic?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
Granted.
Thank you.
I have a question for Don. Do I have to stamp a plan and give it back to them anymore? Is that a requirement?
It is not a requirement. So it's funny how that's evolved. The, um, the rules for stamping and handing to them mean that their appeal clock, or the appeal clock of, of anybody opposed, would start tonight. If you don't stamp and hand them something, then the appeal clock begins when your minutes are approved. So it's really just kind of a nuance of when you're allowed to appeal. That's, that's where that practice came from.
We don't really have a set of plans that I could stamp here.
Right. This is an unusual case, just because it's a regulatory ordinance too, and not a zoning ordinance. So I would say just let it go to the minutes of the next meeting. When that's approved, that starts the clock. No harm, no foul. Just gives more time if there is anybody that wants to challenge your, your, your decision tonight.
Thank you very much. Okay. Unfinished business of the floor? There's none. Let's leave report. Please, Lauren?
Well, we've brought in a special guest, Don Denault, to talk about Hockeyland first.
Ah, I was wondering. Alyssa, Alyssa said to me today, you may get asked about Hockeyland. So if you'd like an update, I'm, I don't have a, a, a big one, but a little one. We did meet with some Hockeyland officials. As some of you may know, the Hockeyland Big Boy team seems to keep evolving. So we're dealing with a certain lawyer, now he's not around, dealt with other people, they're not around. Uh, the one, there's one constant person, I only know him as Bud. And, yeah, Bud is the guy that's always been around. So somehow that poor guy has been stuck with trying to herd the cattle and get everybody on the same page when it comes to things that are needed to be done over there. Uh, there isn't much left. There's nothing left on the legal side to be done. Uh, the meeting that we had with them on Zoom recently was to address the unpaved lot, because this board gave them a variance to have parking on an unpaved lot surface. Um, that surface remains unpaved, but there are some solutions that need to be implemented in terms of fencing it off so people can't, uh, leave the lot going through the residential sub to the side. Um, they have to put in certain requirements that are under our code for, uh, striping. And even though you can't really, you, you think it's counterintuitive to stripe a grassy lot, but they agreed on, on the call that you can do it on a football field, you can do it on a baseball field, you can, you can stripe for events, right? So maybe they don't keep it permanently striped. But if they're going to use the lot for any sort of parking, then they have striping requirements, lighting requirements. Uh, they talked about potentially bringing in those portable, um, light poles for events, because again, they're not gonna use it very often. And in the meantime, they want to put up a decorative fence, um, to keep people from ingress and egress through that lot to leave into the residential sub, because that's not allowed either under our ordinances. So, uh, that is the, that was the main topic of conversation. Uh, they're gonna get started on working on that, and when that is completed, I think that concludes the city's enforcement. I don't think there's anything left.
Has it been given to the county? Has the county accepted it?
Has what been given to the county?
Parking agreement was supposed to be registered with the county, given to the county. We were told last thing that...
Are you talking about recorded?
We were waiting for county approval.
I don't know what that means.
Everything else was done, is what we were told.
Yeah, I don't know what that means by county approval, because the county's not involved in this. Unless it's got something to do with the road on, on Utica, but I can't imagine what that would be. Yeah, so if you're, if you're referring to the register of deeds and recording of documents, yes. It's one of the things I reminded Bud about. Again, I forget his last name, I think it ends with ski. Uh, I think it might be Kowalski, like the sausages, that family. Um, I reminded him that he has shared parking agreements to secure, and he agreed, and he said he'd be working on that. Um, those are obviously necessary for extreme events, and so they have to have those in place. And that's how we left it. So he's been duly notified. I emailed everybody a summary of all that, and they're supposed to be working on it.
So when is the due date?
Well, no one imposed a deadline, because it takes time. They're gonna get it done, hopefully the parking lot will get done this summer. I can't speak for any other deadlines imposed by management.
Do you keep billing them for your time?
They keep, uh, having to pay me back, pay the city back for my time, yes.
That's good.
It's a cost recovery, yep.
And then Sheets will be here Monday for their, just a site plan review. Um, Hayes Road was approved at the June council meeting, the rezoning, so they'll be at Planning Commission in the future, once they get their site plan settled. Uh, and then Planning Commission will also hear special land use requests for complete auto care for a automobile heavy repair garage in the IR district on Monday as well. That is it from the monthly report.
Is there anything, I will, I will ask, but I don't think there is. Is there anything new on the demolition of Sheetz's property?
Do you have any updates? Now, it's not new information, but maybe it's not made it to the zoning board. Um, the owner of the property, who is leasing to Sheets, advised us or somebody at some point that they will not demolish the building until after the site plan is approved. So they are waiting for Monday night's meeting before any demolition would move forward. It's probably just dotting the i's, crossing the t's, as far as their agreement goes.
Can I ask him? Frankie, can I ask him?
Yeah.
How about the Dairy Cream?
The old, the old vacant one?
Well...
Uh, that's, that's kind of old news, uh, in some ways.
Updated.
So, yeah. Um, last year, uh, we had, the city had authorized going to court to try to get them to either fix that place up or redevelop it as promised, uh, way back, years and years ago, as, as promised. That never got done. Uh, that resulted in a, in a mediated agreement. We had a mediator come in and facilitator come in and help us out. Both parties agreed to a variety of terms that were entered with the court, basically giving them a timeline. And they are now under a strict timeline. I don't know how many months they have left. I think they may have about two years, and that sounds like a long time, but in the overall scheme of things, hopefully it isn't, uh, to either redevelop it. They, they prepared a site plan, they, they positioned the building in a certain way, and they want to make the building, the property either more attractive to sell to somebody who will build a new site, or, or build a new site, and build a new building there, that they can then either sell or lease out. Um, so all of the plans, all of the specs, all of the goals have been approved in that agreement. If they get to that deadline, though, and have done nothing, then the city has to give them notice. And if they still do nothing, the city has, uh, after six months, the city has the right to go in and knock the building down and just raise the site and make it, uh, make it clean. Uh, in the meantime, they are obligated under that agreement to keep it, uh, I, I use the phrase broom clean inside. Uh, we actually had to put in the agreement that nothing should be growing in the building. Believe it or not, believe it or not, there were things growing in the building. Uh, and of course, the outside has to be kept and maintained under the property maintenance code, which doesn't mean it has to be beautiful and gleaming, but it does mean they have to keep it weed-free and safe and clean, and, uh, generally speaking, keep it, uh, well-maintained. So if they comply with all of that, we're gonna have inspections every six months to make sure they're doing those things. I don't know if the first one has taken place yet, but I did give, uh, Bob Logan authority to get, to let them know we want to do it and get out there and do it. Um, so when that happens, we'll get a report, and they'll have to keep, keep up with it. And then, um, once their clock unwinds, uh, they'll either have demolished it, which is one hope, or demolished it and rebuilt it, which is another nice hope. So we're on track.
So nothing's new?
Nothing new, nothing new, but to, to ease any concerns about it, um, there's a clock running now.
Right, yes. I, I remember you going over this, this and everything. I thought maybe along the line, there would be a, there's a change or something.
Right. Nope. Nothing new, other than hopefully Bob and his team are getting out there to inspect it pretty soon, if they haven't already, so.
Good. Just to let all of you know, one of the inspectors left, and now we're down to one again, and they're trying to rehire. So Bob's the only one now?
Yeah, Chuck left to go to Claussen.
But we have Todd.
We still have Todd.
That's what says his name.
Yeah, we still have Todd.
Oh. Next is Planning Commission liaison, and that's me. Here's the Sheetz's, uh, site plan. If anybody wants to go through it, they're welcome to it. They're welcome to look at it. I have my notes on it. But, um, it's a very comprehensive site plan. We'll be dealing with it, uh, next Monday at the, uh, alternate meeting date of, for, uh, the Planning Commission. There was no meeting of the Planning Commission last month, uh, since there was no business. Okay. You guys have any questions for me? Oh, we did have a, uh, two, uh, steering team committee meetings for the, uh, looking at the variances. And, uh, we went over the last, the variances that we had done last time with you, and I'd like to do that again, uh, at the end of our, our next regular meeting, if we have business. Okay? If we don't have business, we gotta wait till the end of the quarter to do it. So, um, but we, we're going through, and we're making a lot of progress, actually, and so it's good. So if you want to look at that, that's here for your perusal also. Okay, is there any public to be heard? Public to be heard? Anybody? Seeing no one, I'll bring it back up to the board. Uh...
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
No, yeah. Well, you have anything?
Nope, do not have anything.
Mr. Green?
Nope.
Nope.
Burger's got apples on sale.
No.
Oh, okay. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Meeting adjourned.